Western portion that is in a moderate severity zone or a little bit of high severity zone. Again, this is recently released data from the state of California. It is posted on the city's website, it is posted on our website. And again, we're trying to make sure that this, that we adhere to all of the standards. But again, Los Altos is in a very good state when it comes to the fire hazard severity zones. Other communities have much larger risk. Part of the executive order that Governor Newsom executed changes our home hardening and defensible space language to the new zone zero. This is the zero to five feet. This is from your structure. We have always had the zero to five feet where we try to really keep it moist and green, but we've had to really take a harder look. And the executive order pretty much mandates that in that zero to five feet from your structure, you should have no combustible materials. So if anybody's got a fence going, connecting to the side of their house, it recommends you remove that fence with some non-combustible material. Again, this is very challenging and it is a change. But again, we're trying to get this messaging out there. This is the most significant change a homeowner can make in saving their home in these very dire situations where fire, weather, wind, and humidity, temperature, all align in wildfire spread. One thing I want to hammer home here is that the homeowners have this responsibility. Home hygiene, property hygiene, this is a homeowner's responsibility. We will do our part, we will respond, we will have the staffing, we will have the water supply, we will do as best that we can as the fire department to arrive and extinguish your fire. But if we have a clean property with fire resistant materials that are adhering to the dispensable state space standards and have sealed all those gaps where the embers can get in, remove that debris from the gutters and the roofs and trim the trees back, make sure you have good signage, it just aids us in protecting not only you, your neighbors, but your property, your valued livestock, and the environment. Again, just kind of hitting the home hardening, this is new terminology. I just want to make sure it gets out there and that people have an opportunity to see it multiple times. We want to first identify if your home is in a zone that needs mitigation. So that's that map. And again, home hygiene is everybody's, everybody who's a property owner's responsibility. There are some community based programs, including the Firewise community that you can look at, and we have all that information available on our website. There's an active group in Los Altos Hills that are going around creating Firewise communities, and neighbors across the street from you are great partners to learn from. And again, just reiterating, the zero to five feet, non-combustible areas, five to thirty feet is that lean, clean, and green zone. And then thirty to a hundred feet for your property line, we've got a typo there, I apologize for that, we're looking for good property hygiene. So again, if you, the hundred feet rule does not allow you to go into your neighbor's yard and require them to do it, but it takes you to your property line. We do have an upcoming wildfire mitigation project. So County Fire has a fuels crew, and that fuels crew goes out in advance of fires and reduces fuel loading. And so we're taking large amounts of brush or fuel that are available to burn and reducing that through mechanical chipping and rebroadcasting those chips back on the landscape. It serves a twofold process by kind of recapturing some of the carbon sequestration that we're creating while cutting it down, but it reduces the fuels, the ladder fuels, and makes for a cleaner environment that reduces fuels, fire spread, and allows us to get in there and put that fire out. So there's a six mile stretch along two eighty for hazardous fuel reduction that the Los Altos Hills County Fire District is advancing. And this project work is a moderate fire hazard area as outlined by the City of Los Altos and the State Fire Marshal's Office. This is expected to start in late 2025. How do you find out about information and fires and alerts that are going on within your community? Again, the QR code is active on the screen. If you can see it, go ahead and scan it. Sign up for Alert SCC if you've not. Again, you can Google Alert SCC, it pops right up, it's alertsc.org. This is our way for us to communicate with our community members in the event of a large scale fire, or evacuation, or a flood, or any kind of emergency that may occur. It's a great way to receive information. So if you're not connected to our Alert SCC platform, please, please take a look at signing Another largely talked about concern that many of the members of the public have had is what are we doing for evacuations and alert and warning systems? So we've partnered about three years ago now with the program called Genesis. It was originally called Zone Haven, so anybody that's been following this for a while may have heard that name. But Genesis Protect is the new term, the new company, it's the same platform. And each of these segments that you see displayed in this picture here are either Los Altos Hills, LAH, or Los Altos, LAL, or PA Palo Alto. So this is a local shot of zones within the City of Los Altos, Palo Alto, you even see Mountain View listed there. This is ability for us to get very local and communicate with residents that are living within these zones. So we have a Know Your Zone campaign. There's an active QR code on the screen. If you don't have the app, I would recommend you download it. It allows you to receive text messages or push notifications if we change the status of this zone. So your community is broke up into these zones, and if something's happening in this zone, we have the ability to commute, communicate through the app or through the Alert SCC with, with you directly in that locality.
Hey Brian, answer.
Yes.
I'm hearing Zoom is lost sound.
And also, I will take this opportunity to ask you to make sure that we have the slide on the zones, and I'm going to have the city manager send it out to the city list for his weekly email.
Yeah.
And other resources that we have to push that out.
We'd be happy to share that. Okay.
Okay, are we good? We're good, go ahead.
Okay, continuing on about Genesis. So again, you can see displayed here, this is a zone in normal status. This is pretty much where we're located right now, which is good, I'm glad it's in normal status. You can search on the application, it's a very simple user interface, you type in your address, it'll tell you what zone you're in, it'll tell you what the status of that zone is. We, we use it not only for evacuation, that is its primary mission, but if we had roads cut off during a storm, we could advise the residents that live in that area that a certain street is closed. And again, it's only going to go to those that are signed up with this application in the active zone. So it really narrows down the focus to alert those who need to know. Many of the early situations where we would send out stuff over IPoZ, it would go to many jurisdictions, many miles away from the affected emergency, and then we saw that during the CZU complex fire, and that was very challenging for many residents that were receiving that text message for information that was not happening in their general area. So this is a solution to really get hyper-local and be able to be communicating with those people directly in the zone that is affected. And here's an example, this is in Southern California, but this shows an area that was impacted by fire. You can see on the status, there is the icon of the red fire, and it shows evacuation order in red and evacuation warning in yellow. And the difference is, a warning is a legal notification that there is harm that could come to human life. An order is, it is imminent. So again, we do not have the ability as the fire department to declare an evacuation. We go into unified command with our law partners, and that unified command, we together collaboratively make the decision on where, what zones are going to stay in normal, shelter in place, warning, or order. And again, that's a collaborative effort, but the authority rests with the local law enforcement having jurisdiction, which is why unified command is so important for our two agencies to come together to make sure that we're making smart, timely, accurate decisions and communicating that to the public. And I can assure you, we have trained on this with Los Altos PD, we have trained on this with the sheriff's office. So before that question comes, the answer is yes, we frequently train and we frequently communicate with our law enforcement partners here in Los Altos. And finally, what happens when you see an order or a warning in your zone? What we really want you to do is be ready. We want you to be ready for this. Have your Alert SCC, have your Genesis downloaded, know what zone you live in, pay attention to the weather, man, it's hot, this wind is strange, those are all signs. Pay attention, communicate with your neighbors. And then when you, when you see us activate a red flag warning or activate a zone, that's your time to get set. Have your go bags ready to go. If you need extra time to get out of the community, that might be your moment, that might be your decision point to decide, you know what, I'm going to go stay with my family member in the next town over, or I'm going to go maybe down to Monterey for the day where there's no fire, you know, just get out of the area if you need that extra time. And then of course, if you get an order to evacuation order, that is your time to go. Please go, follow the directions that your public safety officials have given you, and evacuate that area. If you wait and you stay, you further congest the road network, and as we saw in LA, bulldozers were needed to bring in to push cars out of the way so that firefighting apparatus could get in. That's also a firefighting bulldozer that could not be out constructing line, it had to push cars. So again, we help us help you, it's a collaborative approach that we need to take. We all have onus and responsibility in keeping our community safe, and that is the end of our presentation, and we are both happy to take questions.
I'm going to start with a question about evacuation, because Brian, when I was at the almond station last week, one of your colleagues was talking about how, how he served on the Dixie Fire, right? And for the listening public, under mutual aid, fire departments come to the aid of one another, various agencies work together. So we'll see our Los Altos or Santa Clara County Fire Department going down to LA, we'll see LA coming up here, heaven forbid if we need it. But in that instance, he mentioned the town of Greenville. You know what happened in Greenville? Can you relay that to the community right here as it pertains to evacuation, please?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for that. The town of Greenville was impacted by the Dixie Fire, and it no longer exists. The entire community burnt to the ground. And so it's a very traumatizing, very real impact of what modern wildfires can do today. We have to take this seriously. We don't want to put the public at risk, and we definitely don't want to put our firefighters at risk, but we will risk a lot to save a lot. And so this has to be a calculated approach where the community comes together with the fire department, with the local leaders, to make sure that we're doing the right things. Identifying evacuation routes, having the proper alert and notification, making sure we have the right resources and staffing. And then timely, accurate, appropriate decision-making by our public safety officials through unified command is key. And then the rest lies on the public. When we issue that order, you, you have to follow the order or the warning, please.
So, so to add detail, in Greenville, when CAL FIRE came in, there were residents who had not evacuated. And the Structure Protection Group at CAL FIRE spent their time trying to get residents out, and the result of those residents not evacuating was a loss of life and property. So my message to all of our residents is, when you get the evacuation warning, leave. Don't wait for the order if it's within your ability to proactively get yourself out of harm's way and allow the professionals to do their job, and don't divert them to, you know, addressing your poor choices. That's my message to the residents, so. Questions from colleagues? Sally?
Thank you Chief and Deputy Chief, I appreciate it, and I appreciate the tour of the fire station last week as well. So you mentioned briefly the Firewise designation. Do you consider the Firewise designation, if we were to adopt an approach like that, is that an all-inclusive, full package of mitigations? Or is that just a part of other mitigations that you would recommend that we pursue?
So, great question. A couple of things that I want to highlight that really is, has been highlighted by Chief Glass is, time is not in our favor when, in the incident like what occurred down in Southern California, specific LA and LA County occurred. I just want to remind folks who may not be aware that they were experiencing eighty mile an hour sustained winds with a hundred mile an hour gusts. And when you have that type of weather, and they did not get the wetting rains that we have gotten up here. So again, to Chief's point about green, they didn't have green, they had dry. So what, for me, the Firewise communities do is really educate each other. They really kind of collectively, it's like versus having like piecemeal, some folks know it's like as a community, it's kind of like this synergistic approach of really helping one another understand what they can do, but more important than that, it's, it's to the point of like when we all take personal responsibility to keep our yard waste cleaned up, that we make sure we do our best to mitigate as much of what I said earlier about what makes California such a wonderful place to live, it's just the weather, and it's green, and then over time it gets dry. That is what the community can do for, for each other. So as, either as in the case for the recent governor's order, whether it's something like that or additional mitigation efforts that come down from the state, that's where that gets folded into the community as a whole through that, that group. And then from, again, our perspective, that zone zero, we've seen, and we've all, all of your staff that have, that currently work and at the battalion chief level or above, have been out there on these massive wildfires, whether it boots on the ground or it's an incident command team. And what typically burns is just the ground fuel, right? So keeping anything that might burn away from your house will really help us stand a fighting chance to save your house. And that's, again, if all the community is doing that within that Firewise community, that just gives everybody a little bit better odds.
Chief, how far can an ember cast go when it's eighty to a hundred mile an hour sustained winds?
Miles, miles.
And when the fuel content, when the moisture content in the fuel is lower than kiln-dried lumber, what's the ignition rate on an ember cast?
Yeah. He said hundred.
It can be as high as a hundred percent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you're getting a firestorm. So again, a storm typically, you think of like rain coming down, just think about sparks just raining down on everybody's house, and that's what was happening down in LA.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, it's very sobering and very important. I have two questions, and the first, I don't know if it's for you or if it's for staff. God forbid there is an evacuation order, what's going to happen to the institutions like schools if they're in session, or retirement communities where there are a lot of people who don't have their own cars? How, how, how are those bottlenecks of people going to be moved rapidly away from, from danger?
We can take that, we can do it.
Yeah. Well, we'll take the operational aspect for the councilmember. So when you have a large group of folks, let's use a skilled nursing facility perhaps, we will place apparatus there. So those people will shelter in place as part of that order, and we will try diligently to protect that area and put a lot of resources in there. Schools, we work with the school system to bring the buses in to do mass evacuations, and again, those are all part of the incident command system decision-making. So we may actually place that into a warning and then have targeted communication with the principal through the law enforcement officer, because that's going to be in advance of the fire, we want to give them that ample time. So that's all taken into the, the planning process. Not every fire allows us to have that amount of time. So again, we fall back to, we have the order, we have the warning, but we also have shelter in place as an option where we then come in and try to protect around that structure. So hopefully that answers the operational aspect of how we handle that.
Thank you. I, I have a lot of follow-up questions, but given the time, I'll, I'll wait and poke the city manager at our next meeting about those. But my other question I do want to ask, if, if we know, if there is a warning, or we know that there's a likelihood of a warning, let alone an evacuation order, and we are aware of someone at home who is not ambulatory, does not have a car, does not have people looking out for them, whom do we call, whom do we alert to say, hey, that person over there needs help?
That would still be 911. And again, that's part of the greater planning piece that we do. We try to do the most good with the resources that we have available, but if somebody is in immediate harm's way, that's when resources can be diverted based on what the incident commander and in unified command can do. So it may not be a fire engine running there, I mean going there, it may be law enforcement, it could be some other public safety partner to help us through the limited resources that we might have in that moment.
Thank you. I think Art may have something to say about how the block action teams can help.
Yeah, I'm sure, yes.
All right, good.
Yeah, I was going to touch on CERT and the CERT programs and the disaster service workers that can be pressed to the service for the city. Those are some additional tiers within our response capability in the non-emergency environment, non-IDLH environment.
But councilmember, you hit on a really good point. You know, when we talk about ready, set, go, some people need more time than others. And so when we've had situations with even folks who work in the organization, living where they live, where they got an evacuation warning, because some of them live up in hillsides somewhere, they recognize they have pets, and they needed the extra time for pets. So the time to think about how to package your pets up isn't in the moment, it's the part of that ready piece, and then if the red flag comes, that's where maybe you don't have them roaming as free as they, you might normally have them. Again, a lot of it's just taking some of these lessons that we can apply directly to the community here to help the community be prepared.
Mayor, public comment?
Yeah. Do we have public comment on? We have one more question for clarification and then public comment.
Thank you, and thanks Chief and Deputy Chief for being here, and I want to thank the city manager for scheduling this study session. For obvious reasons, this information is very important for us to hear and the community to hear, and I think this is just the start of many conversations and action plans that we have to put in place. I'm curious, and I hope this is not viewed as a challenging question, but you know, with the Southern California fires, there was a lot of blame to go around. And you know, whether or not there's any validity to the blame that went around, we don't know. And there's never, I'm sure, a perfect plan in place because you can anticipate everything. But I'm curious if County Fire, based on what happened January seventh in Southern California, if you have done an internal assessment to make sure if that were to happen here, we have the equipment we need, we have the resources, we have the communication plan, water supply was an issue down there, it may not be an issue here. So I'm curious whether or not, you know, you envision something like that happening here, which I'm sure you have, just to check the boxes to ensure that we have the resources for anything that we could anticipate at that scale.
So I'll speak to what I feel like is appropriate to speak to, which is, as a special dependent fire district, one of the real benefits that the community has for us being your fire department is that we take care internally of all of our fleet, and that is something that we have shored up through, basically well over a decade. In 2000, I would say thirteen, Chief, we got our types five, type threes, that was when we brought in our, our fleet of type three. So we were ahead of the curve knowing that we really do need to front load wildfire-capable equipment. Now, when it comes, so for us, if we deploy resources that, down to Southern California, we backfill with people and equipment. So we have that capability in-house, and we continue to build and shore that up. When it comes to water supply, within the region two, so we're the region two coordinator for the CAL OES, in partnership with CAL OES, that's sixteen counties from the Oregon border all the way down to Monterey with some inland counties. Region two alone sent twenty-five strike teams down to both Palisades Fire and the, why is it escaping me? Eaton Fire. Each engine has, each strike team has five engines or five pieces of equipment, each equipment has four people on it. So you do the math very quickly, it's well over five hundred pieces, right? And each one of them was trying to pull from water that those engines were already trying to pull from. So the system was not designed for what it was being tasked or being stressed that day. So to your point, Vice Mayor, that's where the water tender that we have and the water tender that we're about to take delivery of, and then another one that we have plans for that would be also kind of in that same delivery date, is part of what your fire department is doing to be able to augment the water supply.
What about working with, with CAL Water? Because they're, they're, you know, obviously they're responsible for maintaining the fire hydrants and replacing about one percent of the mains per year, but my understanding is we're vastly different insofar as our water storage is distributed. And in LA, it was all coming from more or less a single source. But the fact that we have, you know, multiple storage facilities that are all interconnected by fault tolerant valves, we can actually move water around a lot better than they did in LA.
Yeah, it's a, a great question, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for that. And we're in communication with CAL Water. Actually, the chief and myself were just at a meeting the other night in Los Altos Hills with Dawn and John. We're on a first-name basis with our water purveyors. We also on a first-name basis with Parisma Water, they just had a gentleman retire, we've been known for many years, and, and now they're going to have somebody replace him, and we'll get to know them. Again, I think that is the difference here, is that we have the ability to sit down and have those meetings and make sure that we're understanding the complexity of our water system, and then making sure that the agency, as the chief discussed, is investing in the right water-carrying apparatus for those rare times where that water system that we are also reliant upon fails. And just to close it out, you know, we do have a wildfire annex that is county-wide, that is put, put together by our County Office of Emergency Management, and so we do review, review that regularly. We train all of our firefighters annually with refresher training for wildland, we're getting ready to do that for all of our folks. So to answer the Vice Mayor's question additionally, yes, plans are in place, and we review those plans regularly. Our emergency operations plan, our local hazard mitigation plan, all of those things are in place, but you're right, not every fire, not every flood, not every tsunami fits what you have in that plan, and that's where we need to be adaptive and resilient.
Thank you.
Speaking of resilient, are we going to have a couple of slides from our LA? We better get to it. Thank you very much, Chiefs, appreciate you. Actually, I'm going to do public comment after the presentation from our LA, right? Because they're both part of the same, and then we'll do public comment. All right. Art, be quick if you can.
I have thirteen slides, most of them are going to be skipped over, we'll just have a couple of conversations.
That sounds good.
Mostly I'm going to echo what they said.
That sounds good.
With some differences, yes. So you have my slide ready to go? There we are, good, terrific. Okay, well, I'm going to skip right over this because you know who we are, I don't have to re-induce resilient Los Altos to you. There is a slide here that I think we need to, this is critical to understanding what we're going to be talking, oh, I'm sorry, next slide. There you go. This is critical. The City of Los Altos has assembled a team of professionals, including police, fire, public works, all these people are great. I'm going to, I'm going to talk about some stuff that sounds like I might be negative about those groups. I have the highest regard for every one of those groups. Our relationship with the, with Santa Clara Fire Department is wonderful, with the police, it's wonderful, we don't have an issue with any of that. But we're going to have some hard things in a moment. They take care of us every day, and they handle stuff every day that shows up every day, so that's great. And when they're stretched too far, they have mutual aid. So if we need a fire engine from Mountain View, we can get it. If we need policemen from, from Palo Alto, we can get it, it works great. Next slide. But events can and have occurred that will overwhelm our city's ability to respond. It doesn't happen often, Loma Prieta, for example, but it can happen, and I think that's one of the things we need to be thinking about. The problem with talking about emergency prepared nations, we're almost always gloom and doom. We're talking about horrible things that are going to happen, and it drives people crazy. So I'm going to try not to spend a lot of that. crazy. So I'm going to try not spend a lot of that, but this is a real issue. So the city has an emergency operations plan. Next slide, please. And many may have seen it, may have read it. Next click, please. What it says in the, on page four, the planning assumptions for the, how the city is going to react is, one, these are the last two planning assumptions, residents may need to be self-sufficient for one week or more. The answer is, this is, you have fewer people here than we have in our LA. 130 people, I don't know in the city these days, we have 300. We're going to be more effective than you are probably in dealing with a lot of these issues. The specific one I want to hang on here is that additional planning, resources, support will be needed to support people with disabilities and others with access and functional needs. 75% of the people that died in the Eaton Fire were over 65 years old. They don't get out. And your question about, well, what are we doing for those people? Well, that was what we wrote in 2015, and it's still there. We don't have a solution for that. We're going to be engaging, Arlay is doing some terrific stuff with technology that we're going to be engaging with the, with city staff on that maybe will be, if they think it's interesting, we'll bring it to you. I think it has potential application here. So we're working to try and do that. Next slide, please.
We need a mic.
Okay. Get it over a little better. Okay. Won't you be my neighbor? The real reaction today is, how do we, in the 25% of the city that we cover, those people know who the fragile people are. They know who the people who are wheelchair bound or don't see people or whatever. And those are the ones that we've trained to put the help OK signs up in their window so that we know where they're going to go. And those neighbors will go take care of those fragile people. And they will say, let's go, you need to leave now, grab your cat, grab the carrier, and let's get out of here. So I think in the neighborhood, so next click, you know, we're going to be able to, if you're standing in a neighborhood that has talked to each other, they're going to be able to react to that and move more effectively, knowing that they, you need this strong community, and they're going to be watching out for their fragile neighbors. And our LA is trying to attract those people to be more interested all the time. Next click, please. Okay, this is going to be a bunch of clicks, so prepare. Click. Family communications plan. Everybody should have one. Where are you going to meet, when the, when the stuff hits? Insurance. Insurance is a very difficult topic these days. We have a lot of what we've done in the fire, in the, in forests, where we said, well, we're not going to let natural fires burn, we're just going to, we're going to contain them so it gets worse and worse and worse. That's what we've done with insurance, that we're now, that the insurance is now, has this upward tick. If we don't do things to take care of the fire hazards that we have in our community, we are not going to be able to buy insurance. So this is a community problem. Next click, please. People ought to have a go bag. I'm not going to go into details here, but you should be able to grab something and leave. Next click. Learn how to use a fire extinguisher. I'm amazed at how many people, you know, fires, you know, shoot it at the top of the flames. They just don't know what to do. Fire blankets are great for kitchen fires as well. Next slide. Meet your neighbors. Know who might need help. Next slide, next click. Get alert. I will echo big time, alert SCC. You need to do that. Everybody in the community should be doing this. And it connects with another app, which I use called WatchDuty. So I built a cabin up in Placer County, and there, I had three fires in the last two years that got close to me. WatchDuty lets you see everything that Genesis is doing. So I can look at a map of where it is, all these fires are relative to me. And I know, not in Placer County, but in Nevada County, I know who's warned and who's actively being pushed away. Terrific application to know to plan because you can see these things changing, and they are terrific source of information about fires. Next one, know how to evacuate. Again, Genesis, I'm a huge supporter of this. You should have the app on your phone, because if you punch it in, no matter where you are, it looks at your GPS, and it tells you what's going on where you are. You can put in your address, but it will tell you what's going on, and it'll tell you how to get away. We're in, I'm in LAL 307, and I know exactly how to get out if I need to. And hopefully, other people are looking at as well. Next slide, or next click. Prepare for your pets. Have a kennel, have a carrier, know how to move your fish tank. People are going to, just the emotional issues of dealing with animals when you're also trying to get out of there, crazy. You just need to be thinking about what you're going to do. You don't have to do it. Okay. Next slide. I'm not going to talk about this slide at all, because it's a huge list, and this is what drives people crazy. Do something. You don't have to do all of this, but do something. The whole point of being, of being prepared is it's not urgent until you procrastinate. It's really important, but you know, it's not urgent. But do something. Next slide. Okay. I took my vacation in 2023 in Kaanapali. And this is the picture looking out across to the south of where, off the balcony of my, this is when we lost cell phones. There's another thing you should try, any of you who haven't done this, try and go a weekend without returning on your cell phone. It's an amazing experience. We are so used to them. Anyway, this mitigation is about taking actions to say that these aren't, that you can minimize the effect of the event. These guys had sirens set up in case there was a tsunami. They were worried about a tsunami, but they had not done any mitigation about what would happen if a fire came roaring down the hill and these fallen winds that are, that are coming off the mountain. Zone Zero would have made a dramatic, dramatic difference. So for us, there's a huge number of things you can do. Everybody should have a Class A fire rated roof in Los Altos. Everybody should have one. And I'll tell you, I drove around here a while ago, I'm guessing 10% at least don't, they still have shake roofs, some of them in pretty bad condition. Attic vents, embers that are blowing, blow through the vents. Everybody has, you know, screens up to keep the Norway rats out, and maybe to keep the yellow jackets out, but those embers, you need about a 16 inch screen. Not very expensive, pain in the ass to go and climb around in there and get it done, but you need to do that. And then wood fences near the house. I'm guess it's almost universal in Los Altos that wood fences come up to the house where the gates are, and on the other side where there isn't. And so I want to show you some stuff about that. But Zone Zero is key. Way debatement and dead tree removal, you're going to be talking about that later. I'm not going to stay for that. I hope you're going to do a good job, but it's important. Store your valuables and documents in the cloud, and take a household video inventory. If you have to leave this, you enabled to be recovering from this situation, you need to have records of what you are doing. Okay? Next slide. I'm going to talk while this is showing. This is a Zone Zero example. So the structure on the right, they've just lit all the fires here. The structure on the right has, both of them actually have Class A roofs. One has a metal gate, one has a wooden gate. Some have the mulch going up to the building. The other ones have some five feet of space around them. And you can see what's happening. The fans are creating the idea of some sort of high velocity stuff. You can see the counter, that's eight minutes. Most people don't have a way to get out of their house in eight minutes. They're not prepared for that. Okay? And now, if you're in the house now, you're dead. Right? So you need to be, people need to be thinking about the kind of acceleration that happens. Now, one thing that the chief didn't bring up, we're not, so you can go ahead and click to the next slide. We're not talking here about wildfire. And I think we need to be careful. There's a, so wildfire, we know how to do that. You'd have cut lines with bulldozers, and you use fire retardant, coming in aerial things. When you get into a community, whether it's Paradise, or Greenville, or Lahaina, or Eaton, or Palisades, all of them are what's called a conflagration, that you get a house on fire, and yeah, when we have a house on fire, you can send a unit up there, maybe two, they can, they can control it, they can put it out. When you get two, you need three units. When you get five, you need more people than you have, and you can't possibly get them from mutual aid fast enough to be of any value. When you've got 10 structures on, on fire, you've got a firestorm blowing embers at 80 miles an hour, and it's going to clean the place out. So if you want to survive that, you need to think about how do you, how do you work with hardening your home, and how do you work with sharing in the community what's going on? So there are two really great areas here. Hopefully, well, people will look at these two things. This weathered by PBS takes people out on the street and shows, basically, they stopped fighting the fire to rescue people. And so you can't, you can't do that. Next slide. So here's Zone Zero at work. This is the miracle red roof house in Lahaina. The building is 100 years old. It's wooden, it has wooden siding. It has a steel metal roof. They heard that, they didn't, those guys didn't understand, didn't, had never heard the term Zone Zero. But they, the problem had was the ground termites were getting into this wooden building and doing it away. And they had understood that if you put, use lava rock for the, under the drip line out that far, and just control the house with that, it, it won't catch on fire. Well, it won't get termites, but it also doesn't catch on fire. So there are examples of houses like this. If you look at photographs in, in any one of those fires, Fountain Grove, any of them, they all have two or three homes out there that survived, and it's because of this sort of thing. They, one thing, you mentioned the idea of a, of an ember storm, an ember cast, that if it, it isn't the fact that the embers are blowing, they'll blow out pretty quick if they keep blowing. The problem is they hit something vertical, and they fall down. And when they fall down, if they fall down into something that is flammable, they're going to light whatever is vertical next to them. So embers come down, fall down, light your house, they light your fence, they light whatever. So it's that ember flowing that does that. So if you don't have anything flammable five feet from your house, you're in much, much better shape. Next slide, please. Okay, so respond. What are you going to do when this kind of stuff happens? First, don't panic. That's the worst you could do. You need to go through the three Ds. You need to say, okay, well, this is different than something I've ever had before, right? I'm not denying that this is, this is happening to me. Then you're going to go through a dithering phase where you're going to say, well, oh, I should, I should do, get this and this, and put it in the car, and you're doing business work to do this. And then finally, you come to a decision where you say, I'm going to decide. And sometimes a decision is, I'm going to sit right here. I'm fine. I'm going to deal with it. But if it's not, then you need to get off and go where you're going to go. So part of the issue is getting through that to make a decision about what you're doing. And that takes mental ability to pay attention to what, what your emotions are doing in a time like this. Find your family. Find the family, the neighborhoods that you need. If you have a higher risk, if you're pregnant, if you don't speak English, if you are, if you're wheelchair bound, if you're old, if you're frail in any way, you need to leave on the warning, not on the order, or even earlier if you want to. But it's the people who are old and decrepit that get killed in these things, you need to be moving out quickly. And if you are not a trained firefighter, do not try to put out a fire. If you could, if it's bigger than a trash can, it's beyond your capacity, get the hell out. We don't need any dead heroes. And that's one of the things that I'm, okay, next slide. Okay, so I have stuff to give out if people want to have a copy, or do a lunch, a bunch of things you can do to get ready. But this is what we're trying to get across to the city about, about being ready for this. By the way, I think the likelihood, I hope, according to our hazard mitigation study, the likelihood of a conflagration in Los Altos is pretty damn remote. And, but it's getting worse. Mother Nature is pissed, and she's coming. It's getting drier and drier and drier all the time.
I heard the likelihood in Lahaina was pretty low, too, Art.
Yeah.
If you're done, let's get questions from council.
One last comment.
We've got to move quickly.
High pressure zone north of Hawaii, Hurricane Dora south created 70 mile an hour winds. So it's these winds that cause this, these kinds of conflagrations. Yeah.
I think the two of them together, coalition, the companies, speak the right together, coalition of the companies, all the people we're talking about, you could, you know, the ready together, coalitions.
Okay. Oh, yeah. So we're working, yeah. So we've great, lots of things we're doing. We're with the Community Foundation, we have a ready together coalition that we're putting together. One of the things we're working with is the guy who's running Hidden Villa. He's doing some dramatically nice work up there with, with fire mitigation sorts of things. So we're being really supported by the, by the foundation.
I'm going to look to my colleagues quickly to see if there's any questions of Art before we go to public comment. All right. Do we have public comment?
I have no speaker cards.
Okay. Thank you, Art. Thank you, fire chiefs. I know we are 12 minutes late already, but council's going to need at least five minutes, and then we'll get started with our regular meeting, okay? And again, I'm sorry for our late start. We have had a series of meetings leading up to this, and sometimes when you start to get a little bit late early in the day, it rolls on, and here we are 20 minutes late. You know, the sum of probably 10 little two-minute things that we did earlier. So with that, the meeting is called to order. City Clerk, would you please establish quorum?
Councilmember Lang.
Here.
Councilmember Meadows.
Here.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Here.
Vice Mayor Flagler.
Here.
Mayor Daley.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Now, since you Eagles are always prepared, I'm going to throw you a monkey wrench and ask you to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So we've got the flag right here, and I will just drop this on you unannounced. Wonderful, thank you. All right, so we did have a closed session earlier tonight. Council took no action at that closed session for me to report. Now I will look at my colleagues and see if any of them have requests for changes to the order of the agenda. All right, seeing none, then we will move right to our special item, something I've been looking forward to. We have several Eagle Scouts with us tonight, and they're getting special recognition by the city. I was lucky enough to be at the ceremony where they were promoted, and I just want to share my own reflections briefly, which are to say that, you know, these young people are really the finest examples of service and civic engagement and, you know, just the highest values that I think we could all hope to, to, to show. And these young, young people are just the shining examples. They've all done wonderful projects along the way to earn the right to be an Eagle, along with a number of other, you know, numerous requirements that they had to achieve along the way. But we did take some special note of their projects on their certificates, and I will share a little bit about that. Now, I'm going to present these, and afterwards, I also want to get a picture with the, with the Eagles by the city seal if I can. So the first one, and you know, I'm going to come around here to make this a little bit more, make this work a little better here. So the first certificate that I have is for Ryan Chen, and this is a certificative achievement honoring the Boy Scouts' highest rank, honoring Ryan for achieving Eagle. And his project was very unique. He was involved in painting paw prints on sidewalks to help lead elementary schoolers to follow the safest route to their school. Now, over the years, I have seen numerous Eagle projects in the city, and they're all wonderful. Many of them are things like equipment sheds and, and physical structures. And so I think it's really unique and interesting and breaking new ground to do this kind of a project. So I wanted to, I wanted to just sort of say something special about that. I think that's wonderful. So Ryan, why don't you come on up here, and then I will hand you your certificate and then shake your hand, and we'll get a picture. Yeah, let's go over here. All right. After I give out the three certificates, I want to get a picture with all three of you, okay? All right, now it's my pleasure to honor Matthew Wong. Is that, am I pronouncing your last name correctly? Please come up, Matthew Wong, in honor of achieving the Boy Scouts' highest rank, Eagle Scout. And for his project, Matthew created a meditation and relaxation area at Avenida Rose Cleaner Center to provide a peaceful space for older adults. Again, a very interesting and unique project, and I really, really appreciate the outside the box thinking that you, you brought to your project. All right, last but certainly not least, Nathan Leong. Nathan, am I saying your last name correctly? Good, come on up. In honor of achieving the Boy Scouts' highest rank, Eagle Scout, and for leading the renovation of a kindergarten area into a pleasant outdoor learning space. Wonderful project. Again, all three of these, I really have to say, to me, these are wonderful projects. I cannot count the number of physical structures that I have seen and been grateful to Eagles for providing to the city, but these are truly creative projects. Thank you. And if I could get the other two Eagles to come up, and we'll get a group picture, and maybe the parents if they're here too, please. Because I know that you guys, we should be honoring you for all the things that you've done over the years to get your Eagles to this level as well, right? We get some parents, come on, parents, don't be shy. Don't be shy, come on. Yeah, we've got, the city will take pictures and we'll share them with you.
Okay.
Can you get us all in?
Yep.
All right. Thank you, thank you guys, I appreciate you all. Thank you. Okay, and now we are going to turn to public comments for items that are not on the agenda. Madam Clerk, do we have speaker cards?
Yes, we have two speaker cards. The first speaker is Hugh Ho.
Mm-hmm. Okay, three minutes each, please.
Hello, city councilmen and women and the city staff. I'm Hugh, and this is my mom, Cam. And I know this is not the agenda, so thank you for allowing me to speak. And just to start off, my son is also an Eagle Scout, so I would, I would love to have you to attend his ceremony, and my younger son is also on his way in Troop 37. So, thank you, that was very nice that you've done that for them, thank you. So I just wanted to make it really quick, I know that you can't make any decision today, but I wanted to reiterate what I have shared in the email that I have been sending over. So we are living in the 500 blocks of Panchita. We are well over the 500 feet from the Jarden area. So Panchita is the longest street among all the other neighboring streets. So it really shouldn't have been blanketed to have all the city sign, parking, parking restriction signs imposed. And we have never been affected. And so I have two boys in high school, and I take care of my mom long, full-time. And we have been affected tremendously from, we already have four vehicles sharing among the whole family. So we are relying on at least one spot in the street for parking. And then when service vehicle come, especially to service my mom with the IHSS service, sometimes overnight, sometimes in the morning, and then just friends and family visiting, it has created tremendous frustrations, and we have been ticketed as well. So with all that said, I know you've heard this before, and with the revised proposal that I have read recently, I was very confused, but now it's come to my attention that this, the 500 feet, I thought it was not going to include my stretch, because my stretch is particularly after Abrelo and just before El Verado. So that is further away, and some of the streets closer to the school actually doesn't have any signs. And I know that the city has made tremendous customizations on other neighboring streets like Alicia and Valencia. I have seen street signs pointing one direction, another direction, sections of the street were broken up, some, some houses can have parking, and no restriction in other houses have. So I am respectfully asking the city to consider revising simple, simple, very simple solution for my stretch of the street is just to remove the street sign from El Verado to Abrelo. That will, no one will object to that, because I have already talked to the neighbors, only really six houses are impacted, and I've talked to them. So I would like to ask that, and everything is captured in my email. So may I ask when the city would reconsider this?
Hugh, we are, Hugh, we are not able to respond to your comment. That's unfortunate, we can't respond in public comments, no.
Okay.
But I, we will follow up with you in response to your email, okay?
Okay, because I know you can't respond right now, I understand.
Correct.
But when would, would it be reassessed, and when would that be?
Again, I, I'm not going to respond to your, to your public comment or your question tonight at the meeting, because it's not noticed to the public.
Okay, so I just have to wait for your response in email?
Yes, we'll get back to you with your email, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Within the next, within probably a day or two, right? City manager? Oh, you have?
I, he did, and I responded back, so I, I don't understand his response. So, because I'm just asking when, he's saying that nothing will change.
I get it, I cannot have a conversation with you about this right now, okay? We will follow up and have a discussion. You, you and I can have a discussion. I will follow up with you to see if I can facilitate.
I would love that.
Better understand.
Can we meet some, you know, like, tell me, yeah.
I can't have this conversation right now, okay?
Okay.
So we need to have the next commenter, okay?
Let's reach out to each other then, okay? Thank you.
The next speaker is Kim Mosley.
Hi, Kim.
Good evening, Mayor Daley, Vice Mayor Weinberg, and councilmembers. I wanted to share, oh, I'm so sorry, Mayor Daley, Vice Mayor Flagler.
Six in one, half dozen another.
My apologies. So I just wanted to come and share the recent issue of the Silicon Valley Magazine with you, with our local hometown hero, John Chu, Director of Wicked, in this issue. And we helped to procure the placement of, of that in this issue of the magazine, as well as the San Francisco one, and that is on page 59, I believe, that's tabbed for you. But in addition, we were able to procure a second article, which is on page 23, referencing Los Altos and highlighting those foundational businesses here in the community that really are, really were key to the development of our community. So you'll see Chef Chu's reference there, but DiMartini Orchard, Wright Myers, Works Lot, et cetera. So I just wanted to let you know that that's something that came out recently, and wanted to share that with you. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. All right, the next item on our agenda is our consent calendar. First, I'll ask if there are public comment on, on any item on the consent calendar?
Yes, I have one speaker card.
I was just reminded by my colleague that we now have a new norm, which is to say, we may remove some of these items, and then we'll have public comment on them separately. So let me first ask if any of my colleagues want to pull anything from consent. Okay, seeing no efforts, no desire to pull anything from consent, let's have the, the public comment, and we've got three minutes.
The speaker is Alice Mansell.
Good evening, council. I rise to request the removal and discussion of the draft minutes on your consent calendar, specifically requesting edits and other cures for your discussion and action on the library courtyard project. I rise for the Preservation Action League of Los Altos, otherwise known as PALLA. We submitted voluminous public comments today. It's in your digital packet. We got it all sent over before noon today. It's on pages seven to 19, for those watching on Zoom or in the video record in that big packet. So that gave more than seven hours for you and city attorney to review it. There's a lot of dense legalese, which we feel speaks for itself. Right. And also for the public record, we've received three unsolicited emails from one of the council members, so already know how he will vote on at least two of our three appeals requests for changes in the docket. And I'm also not going to hand out any candy to councilor staff, like appearance of conflict of interest. Thank you.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar. Is there a second?
Can I clarify something with the city attorney?
Yes.
Do I need to recuse myself from the travel request? Do you care? My travel request?
No, I, you can vote on it.
Okay.
Councilmember Lang.
Yes.
Councilmember Meadows.
Yes.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Flagler.
Yes.
Mayor Daley.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, that takes us to our discussion items. The first of the discussion items is our committee appointments. And earlier tonight, we had a special meeting where we interviewed several candidates for the Joint Volunteer Awards Committee. So we've got our, we'll be marking our ballots and submitting them now. And the way we're going to do this, the way we're going to do this is the candidates that get the most votes will get the two four-year terms, and the candidate that gets the next most votes will get the three-year term, unless there are objections from my colleagues who would prefer to do it differently. But two-year term, it's through 27, you're correct, yes. So does anybody have any objections to that format?
I, I will make, I make a more complicated suggestion, but will be less likely to end in a tie. Instead of whoever, the two who get the most votes, maybe we do a point system. Your first choice is three, your second choice is two, your third choice is one. Adding up points will make it less likely that there will be a tie.
Thank you for your suggestion. I'm Thank you for your suggestion. I'm reticent to implement any kind of unique voting procedure that we haven't actually.
I apologize, mayor. We were looking for a ballot, a missing ballot, so I missed the request from Councilmember Weinberg. Can you just be repeating because we were looking for a missing ballot?
I'll see if I can repeat for him. We suggested more or less ranked choice voting for this. And I'm going to decline to entertain that further because we have not discussed it or noticed it. And I don't think it's appropriate to implement a change in our voting procedure without going through those procedural steps.
Mayor, if I may, I have indicated who I think the two-year appointment should be and here are my ballot. Here's my ballot. Thank you.
Oh, you know what? That's fine. Let's just do it that. Let's do it that way. We'll, we'll, you know, put a little star next to the person you think should get the short term, okay?
That works for staff, yes. And I will, once we receive all five ballots, just for members of the public and those watching at home, once we collect all of the ballots, I will open them and read them and I will announce the top three. And then everybody who applied and interviewed will get a follow-up email from staff as well tomorrow.
And the ballots are public records?
The ballots are public record, yes.
Are you going to let us know the result right now?
I will.
Okay.
I'm a quick reader. Okay, if I could just have. And a quick time.
Do we need to take public comment on this item? Okay.
I would recommend so, yes.
Are there any public comments on this item?
I have no speaker cards.
Okay.
Okay, so it looks like we have four votes for, and I apologize if I'm saying the name wrong, Archana Apana. We have five votes for Charles Lindauer. I'm sorry, we have four votes for Charles Lindauer. We have five votes for Ginny Lear. So those are the top three vote-getters. And for the two-year term, I think we have a tie for the two-year term between. I actually am looking at this. Ginny Lear is the two-year term. She just got one extra vote there. So Ginny Lear will serve the two-year term. Archana Apana and Charles Lindauer will serve four-year terms. Those terms expire September 2027 for Ginny Lear and September 2029 for Archana and Charles Lindauer.
Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes, Councilmember Meadows.
If, if I heard you correctly, you said that Ginny got the most votes.
She did, but we changed at the last second and we indicated who we wanted to have the two-year term on the ballot.
You said for the two.
For the two-year term, the asterisk that was next to the, indicating for the two-year term. That's, that's where she did receive five votes unanimously to serve on JVAC, but for the seat assignment.
I didn't understand. I thought you meant the most votes of all and then, okay, got it. Thank you.
All right, so we're good.
So the minutes will certify the approval and these are public record, the ballots.
Great. So now we're going to move on to item seven. This is an introduction of an ordinance, amending chapter two, section two, point oh four, point oh one oh of the Los Altos Municipal Code pertaining to meetings. And I think we're going to start with a staff report. Is that correct?
Yes, luckily for you, I have no presentation tonight because this is a fairly simple one. This is a very short section of the municipal code which just regulate, it just dictates the time and date for our regular meetings. And it gives the city council some flexibility in amending those dates and times if they choose to add any special meetings. I also gave, I did a poll for other cities for start times of their, their regular meetings. And so you could also at this time alter the start time of your regular meetings if you so choose. If you don't want to, we can continue on at 7:00 PM. And the language for the updated ordinance, the language for the ordinance is included in the staff report in Exhibit A and also in the updated ordinance as attachment one.
I'm going to assume we've all read that.
I did, I did have one point out for the ordinance as this was supposed to originally go at the last meeting. It was pushed at the bottom of the ordinance. You'll see the dates are wrong. We'll change that before it's finally adopted.
Okay, and do we have public comment on this item?
I do. I have one speaker card, Eric Steinle.
All right, three seconds. I'm sorry, three minutes.
Unaccustomed as I am to speaking for three minutes, let me launch into this. Six o'clock. I recommend that you change the start time of meetings to six o'clock. That happened with the planning commission this last year and I think it works very well. For me, the hours between five and six are more, less important than the hours between 11 and 12, for example. So if we could start a little earlier, we could perhaps end a little earlier or have a little more time. You never know. But I think it is beneficial. It looks like that's the general trend in the neighborhood and I'm not aware that there have been any uprisings as a consequence. So I think that that's something that is at least worth an effort. And I know that this may run up against special meetings and other things like that. That's a concern. And, and how you handle that is going to be a challenge that you were up to. But I do think that it is valuable to start at six o'clock. The reasons for starting later, three years ago, four years ago, I would have said differently is now we have YouTube available. People can see the meeting even if they can't make it. Whereas before, if they wanted to know what was happening here, they had to be here personally, okay? So unless they're going to speak, they can catch up with the parts that they missed. So I'm a little less concerned about public access to the meeting as a consequence of starting early when people have things like jobs that run up against that. So I think that that's something you should take seriously, you should consider. It seems to be popular with the staff. But I think it would be beneficial and it would, who knows, more people may come if they don't have to stay quite so late. So you never know. That's my thought. Thank you.
Okay, now we'll bring it back to council for deliberation. Does anybody have remarks or if there are, if there isn't any commentary, then we can move to a motion?
Mayor.
Councilmember Meadows.
Thank you. I just had noted in, and you will see it in the Q and A, that under B in the exception language that I said that rather than saying the earlier start time shall prevail, which may be the case tonight, but it wouldn't necessarily always be the case. And so I thought it should say the, whatever I said, the revised start time or the adopted start time or, or something. So that would be my one comment.
I don't see any other remarks. Councilmember Meadows, did you want to move that with that amendment, we adopt this ordinance?
Yes, I will. Can I get away with so moved or would you?
Yes, you can. Yes, you can get away with so moved. So moved with the amendment.
As amended.
Yeah. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Lang.
Yes.
Councilmember Meadows.
Yes.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Flagler.
Yes.
Mayor Daley.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, that moves us on to item number eight, the introduction of another ordinance for parking enforcement code update. Staff report.
There we go. That was a slow transition. Good evening, Mayor, Honorable Councilmembers. Anthony Karnasek, Assistant to the City Manager. I have a short PowerPoint that I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. So before you today is amendments to the code with the goal of allowing private sector parking enforcement services, which were identified by staff as the big hurdles we needed to adopt before moving forward. So the recommendation is to introduce in wave first reading of LAMC Section 150, which is a new section for motor vehicle parking citations, and then modify sections 8.04 and 8.20, and then adopt some small changes to the ALPR policy governing mobile ALPR use specifically for parking enforcement. So LAMC Section 150 is a motor vehicle parking citation section that creates standalone. It adopts consistent definition of enforcement officer that you're going to hear me say a couple of times tonight. The idea is consistency throughout our code. So that will be the enforcement officer definition that you see before you. It outlines the motor vehicle parking citation process and it provides a little more detail in the staff report. You have the full ordinance in front of you if you want to read through it. Section 8.04 governs vehicles and traffic. It adopts that same definition for enforcement officers and allows enforcement officers to enforce parking laws and issue parking citations. It's very important. That is different than any moving violations. So enforcement officers may only enforce these parking laws and parking citations, but nothing to do with moving violations. I know that was a question in the QA and I wanted to clarify that for council tonight. And then section 8.20 as for stopping, standing and parking, it does allow the defined enforcement officers, consistent with that same definition, to remove vehicles found to be left standing for a period of time more than 72 hours or any vehicle remain parked longer than 60 minutes after a citation is being issued. The big thing for that is if we're talking about a special event where we've sectioned off an area of downtown, this would allow enforcement officers to remove that vehicle if necessary, which previously they weren't allowed to. And then a small edit was to remove the for sale signage at the direction of the city attorney due to case law. And then ALPR policy 462, the amendments tonight allow mobile ALPR use for digital chalking for parking enforcement. That ALPR data will not be accessible to other jurisdictions unless it has been requested. The city jurisdiction identifies that it is a valid concern and use and that we have data that we can provide for any specific issue. And then all other components of this will abide by the ALPR policy that you've already reviewed. And with that, the recommendation is relatively straightforward. I hope that was helpful and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
So questions from colleagues for clarification before we go to public comment? Councilmember Meadows?
Just a quick one. So on the parking, standing, whatever that slide was titled, it's not the 72 hours, it's not the restrictions that are changing. It's just the definition of who can enforce those restrictions.
Correct. Previously, it was only in sworn police officers, so.
Yeah, which is not the best use of their time. Okay, got it. Thank you.
Yeah, and then there were some changes about the administrative hearing officer and the administrative hearing process. So we're trying to make it align with the chapter one hearing process.
Councilmember Lang, you look like you have a question?
So this is a follow-up. There are a number of questions in the Q and A and thank you for everyone who responded. There was just one that I needed, wanted to follow up on which was the, there's a sort of ticking expiration on the ALPS data, right? And the scenario I was thinking about, and in the Q and A it said, okay, well, it'll be retained for more than 21 days. So that if you appeal promptly, you're in good shape. The scenario I was curious about was one where I'm inadvertently delinquent. After all, the ticket is on the outside of the car. It's conceivable it goes away. I then find out about it in the mail and now I want to appeal, which will take me at least some time. And I wanted to make sure that in that sort of scenario where unintentional delinquency, I got to get myself organized to appeal, if it's a day longer than the retention time, the evidence has disappeared.
I believe that Section 150 clearly lays out that it's from the citation date. So it's not of when you notice the citation. So it's that 21 days is valid from when you receive that citation. So if you get your ducks in an order like 10 days late, you still only have the time that's been allotted within the municipal code section for an appeal, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I was just concerned about the scenario since it's not being mailed to me. It's tucked under my windshield. They can disappear if you have kids who live in San Francisco. This is all too familiar to me. And I was just wondering about that scenario where because of that delay, the evidence might disappear.
I don't know if we account for evidence of the citation disappearing in the code section. I think it would be, the burden would be on the person who received the citation to make sure they know they have one. And I think they could call the police department and they would be able to provide that information if someone were curious.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you and thank you, Mr. Karnasek, for putting this together. Two questions on the mobile ALPRs. Will the third-party enforcement, let me step back. I assume that the ALPRs are the cameras that we currently have for the city that are managed through our police department. So if we have third parties enforcing using mobile ALPRs, will they have access to the ALPRs? Will they be to go in? Like, how will that work? How will they use our mobile ALPRs?
So we, we checked with the company because we know that that was a concern from council and from the community and we're able to set up the system however we want. So what we would do is set it up to where the enforcement officers would not have access to the system. They can use the device just for the ticketing, but they would not have access to go into the system and see any data.
And will the third-party entity manage the ticketing process, the follow-up? Or will that be done in-house by the PD at all?
That's actually, would still continue through TurboData, which is the current citation processing provider.
So then can the chief or Anthony explain to me the role of the third-party enforcement officers then? So they are out in the field. Go ahead.
They're the ones actually writing the tickets and TurboData is the one that does the processing.
Okay, thank you. And then on the chalking, because I was intrigued by this digital chalking. It's a tongue twister for me. And this is just me thinking ahead to later enforcement. If we have the chalking, because you know, my colleague mentioned San Francisco and another thing they would do back in the days, like just basically wipe off the chalking. And so fortunate, remember, like, but fortunately, they wouldn't be able to do this. And so I'm thinking ahead where we have two-hour parking restrictions. And what we also know individuals do is they just inch up. So you chalk them in there, they're inch up to another place just so that the two-hour clock would restart. With a chalking, is there any way to tie that to the license plate? And the reason I'm thinking is, so even if they inch up, we can make it that it's two-hour parking in that area because we're tying it to the license plate.
As far as I understand, we can set the parameters. So we can define distance that, I think our municipal code has a clear section that how far you need to move your vehicle in order to restart that clock. And so we would make the system aware of what those parameters are.
It does, but before it was chalk, right? But now we have this modern technology, which I think will make it easier, easier for us to enforce that.
Correct.
Great, thank you.
Are there any other questions from colleagues for clarification? Okay, now we go to public comment.
I have no speaker cards.
All right, bring it back to council. Yes?
Sorry to interrupt. Housekeeping item, there's going to be three ordinances introduced. 804, 1.50, 804, and 8.20, and then the APLR policy. So you need to make, you should make separate motions on all of those.
Do we need four motions?
Yes. So it's just that the recommendation wasn't clear.
Can we get the motions put up on the screen or something or, you know what, my colleagues prepared to make the motions.
Mayor, I move that the council adopt an ordinance of the city council of the city of Los Altos, adding section 1.50 of the Los Altos Municipal Code governing motor vehicle parking violation enforcement.
Second.
Councilmember Lang.
Yes.
Councilmember Meadows.
Yes.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Flagler.
Yes.
Mayor Daley.
Yes.
Motion carries.
I'll entertain the next motion.
Mayor, I move that the council adopt an ordinance of the city council of the city of Los Altos, amending section 8.04 of the Los Altos Municipal Code governing vehicles and traffic.
Second.
Councilmember Lang.
Yes.
Councilmember Meadows.
Yes.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Flagler.
Yes.
Mayor Daley.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next motion.
Mayor, I move that the council adopt an ordinance of the city council of the city of Los Altos, amending section 8.20 of the Los Altos Municipal Code governing stopping, standing and parking.
Second.
Councilmember Lang.
Yes.
Councilmember Meadows.
Yes.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Flagler.
Yes.
Mayor Daley.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Final motion.
I guess there's no resolution for the final motion. It's just.
It's to adopt the policy change.
Mayor, I move that the council adopt the modifications to policy 462 of the Los Altos Police Department. Altos Police Department as discussed this evening and as is included in the packet.
Second.
Councilmember Lang.
Yes.
Councilmember Meadows.
Yes.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Flagler.
Yes.
Mayor Daley.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, we're going to move to our next item, number nine on the agenda, the introduction of another ordinance on weed abatement. And I'll look to staff for a report.
Just one moment here.
We're moving too quickly.
Bringing forward tonight a weed abatement administrative ordinance. Can I kind of kick us off with that? Is that this is different in a departure from what we've recently discussed about weed abatement in the city. So as some background, in June last year, we authorized the participation of the county, in the county of Santa Clara's weed abatement program and obviously followed some following steps that have brought us here today. And then in November, we did declare weeds a public nuisance as defined in our municipal code and as a part of the county program. And then in January, as the council is aware, we heard an appeal hearing was held and we heard all objections for the inclusion of those properties in the program. At that time, we received nine objections or appeals to the participation in that program. All nine appeals were granted for the participation in the weed program. And that brings me to, just to cover our, at a high level, what the process is and would actually still remain after this administrative ordinance is adopted, is a five-step process and approach. And these are all legal requirements in order for us to do the process as this is the standard requirements for declaring something a public nuisance. First, you have to adopt a resolution declaring the public nuisance. Second, you have to actually notice those that are in violation. Three, you then have to have appeal proceedings. Four, from there, you have to adopt a resolution ordering the actual destruction after appeals were considered. And then five, if destruction was required, you have to then do record noticing and an assessment of the destruction, which in this specific case would then be collected on the county tax roll. What is a departure? Because I think we obviously all realize that nine appeals that took just over two hours is not going to be sustainable if we have future years with additional objections to the participation in the program. So the ordinance mirrors what is in our municipal code currently. However, it assigns the city manager or their designee to serve as the hearing officer instead of the council. This is very common practice in other jurisdictions so that it's not having to be taken up by the council directly, as this should be a pretty prescriptive program as it is in our code. With that being said, an additional provision that was included is those that were to have an objection of the inclusion in the program do need to provide two very basic factors, which is very indicative of an appeal of a project or something within the city. Is one, a written documentation objecting to the participation, our participation in the program that provides some detailed justification that would be sufficient in order to essentially elaborate as to why there is existing noncompliance and how that would be remedied moving forward. I think we, that's pretty much the gist of what the council received verbally. However, we have no documents other than our minutes. That's pretty insufficient with our normal other practices here in the city. Additionally, I am recommending that printed photocopies no smaller than five by seven, which clearly show the portions of the subject property. There was a council Q and A that said, why don't we do this electronically? There's not really going to be an easy or clear process for us to do that electronically with a, with an appeal proceeding, considering that the appeals that were to be essentially objected to in the future, the individuals will still need to come in person. So we're not, we're not streamlining the process of that it would be virtual, almost like in a modern kind of court proceeding, you know, how things are happening virtually and remotely, still with a lot of different circumstances. So we do feel that it's prudent and probably just streamlined for all extensive purposes to have it as the printed hard copy. And then further, the, the hearing officer at this time would then actually make the appropriate determination for the inclusion or the removal from the project, or from the program, rather, and will then provide their final determination, which then would be a list that goes to the city council to affirm on the consent calendar. So with that, the recommendation is, is to introduce the new ordinance, which would live in Title 11, which is miscellaneous property regulations in the municipal code. I'm available for questions.
Okay, I'll look to my colleagues to see if they have questions for staff. Councilmember Lang.
Thank you, and I'm excited about streamlining the process, much as I enjoyed hearing about all those weeds. The, the question I have is, as I recall, there was another thing that they could have done. In fact, some people did do last year, which was get in touch with the county people directly, work out proof that they had abated the problem and just didn't have to go to the appeals. They may not have known that and hence were at appeals. Am I correct in understanding that that avenue for resolution would still be available to people?
Thank you and thanks, Mr. Zorins. And to echo Councilmember Lang's point, I really appreciate staff putting this together based on what we went through with the hearings. I think this is a great way to streamline it and just make the process more efficient and clearer for residents. My question relates to the hearing officer's role, the city manager or designee. The ordinance is silent on the criteria by which the hearing officer will determine whether to remove a property from the list. And I'm just curious, because of course we want consistency, you know, Mr. England will be here forever, but we don't want a situation where we have a city manager or hearing officer using subjective criteria to decide whether or not they remove a property from the list. So I'm just curious whether or not objective criteria has been identified. And I know when we were hearing the weed abatement appeals a couple of weeks ago, we all started out not really knowing what was going to happen and what criteria we're going to use, but I can tell you by the end, I think we had all narrowed in on certain criteria that we thought was applicable and fair to apply. And so I don't know if Mr. Zorins or Mr. England can talk to that or if that's something that they still need to work on. But I think it's very important to have that kind of information documented in the ordinance.
So it's my understanding is that the county was also going to be looking to refine what they define as essentially violating weeds. So I would be hesitant to include it explicitly in our code at this time because the county will be identifying what is the violation when it comes to especially like the defensible fire area, kind of like what we just previously heard with the county fire authority. So I think it's somewhat in flex over the next few months while they're kind of updating their code. And we would then apply whatever it is that is the determined violation if we're able to, because the, the hearing officer would also have to have the county representative here to essentially then also articulate why, based on the pictures and the evidence, that's why that's going to be really important, as we know that there were a couple that didn't bring photos, for them to be able to provide insight to the actual objection. So then it is a little bit more kind of transparent about each individual essentially violation.
And so thanks for that answer. Do you think staff would be able to, if there's direction from council after public comment, to put together a language reflecting what you just said about really relying on the county criteria, whatever they come up with?
Yes, I think we can integrate that.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't, I don't see any other questions from my colleagues, so I'll, I'll turn it over to the public and see if there's any public comment.
I do not have any speaker cards.
Okay. Then we'll bring it back to council for deliberation or a motion, if somebody is so inclined. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to follow up with staff confirming that they could draft language and we're not wordsmithing, but just language, exactly what Mr. Zorins said, that the criteria, the evaluation criteria will be based on the county standards. Thank you.
Nick, should we add that in 11.0607, oh, part of the hearing officer's decision in that section? As the little b, little i, 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 maybe? Yeah, you can figure...
Okay, I will entertain a, a motion to advance this ordinance? No? Yes?
Question, I mean, with, with this change, which I support, I think that's a very good point, with this change, can we still move on this or, this is a substantive change? Doesn't this have to come back to us?
No, it's, you're introducing, you can do this.
Okay.
Oh, you can introduce it as amended and it's only upon adoption, when it's a substantive change, that you have to re-introduce.
Thank you for clarifying that. Sorry about that.
So this is the introduction of the ordinance and we're entitled to make an amendment to it now as we introduce it, right? Okay, just confirming.
I'll make the motion, Mayor.
Second.
Councilmember Lang.
Yes.
Councilmember Meadows.
Yes.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Flagler.
Yes.
Mayor Daley.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, so the next item is going to be our mid-year budget update. And I would like to take a short 10-minute break before we come back and do the budget, okay? And I look to my colleagues. I think we're going to go ahead and get through the agenda tonight. So, and, and I'll let the residents know that if you're here for an item on the agenda, I'm pretty sure we're going to get to it. So with that, we'll take a 10-minute break. With that, we'll take a 10-minute break. Okay, let's have everybody resume their seats, we're gonna go ahead and reconvene. We are going to have one minor little tweak to the agenda because of some vote-counting complications on our commission appointment. We are actually going to vote for two candidates who were tied for the third and final seat, which would be Chuck Lindauer and Dennis Young, so vote for the one of those two candidates that you want to have that final seat, okay?
Wait, wait, I'm sorry, we're voting between?
Chuck Lindauer and Dennis Young for the third and final seat, because Archana and Ginny got more votes, and so they are seated, or they will be seated, but now it's Chuck and Dennis who, it turns out, were tied, and we do need to break that tie.
Why do we have two other people on the ballot?
This is just a reprint of our initial ballot, the only names on there that you should vote for would be either Dennis or Chuck, one or the other, a single mark on the ballot.
For the two-year term.
That was a miscount, and we will correct the record.
And this is for the two-year term?
No, Ginny got the two-year term because that was the, because we separately indicated that that's what, right?
Yes, Ginny Lear does have the two-year term, very clearly, there was just a misread on Dennis, one of the votes for Dennis Young, so he tied for the third seat with Charles Lindauer, so we'll just need to know between those two men.
You know what, there might have been a way we could have avoided this, you're right. You know what else? If a bullfrog had wings, he wouldn't bump his butt every time he jumped.
Okay, the official vote is three votes for Charles Lindauer, two votes for Dennis Young, so Charles Lindauer will receive the third seat, which expires September 2029.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now, we are to the fun stuff, we are on item number 10, our fiscal year 2425 mid-year budget update, and so, we have three actions for council consideration. The first is recommended to adopt a resolution approving FY2425 mid-year financial update and budget adjustments, the second would be adopting a resolution approving the transfer of funds to CalPERS to pay down the city's unfunded accrued liability, and the third would be to adopt a resolution approving the updated FY2425 pay schedule. So, for starters, I think we have a staff report, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and we are excited to give you the fiscal year 2425 mid-year budget update. I am especially excited, because next year Jesse will be doing it. Before we get started, I do want to thank city staff for their excellent work in continuing to be good fiscal stewards of the city's finances, as well as their help in putting together the mid-year budget update. I especially want to thank our new finance director, Jesse Kim, who started just a handful of months ago, and when she started, I said, "Don't worry, I will take care of the mid-year budget," and then I think she did the vast majority of the work on it, so thank you to her and her staff for their efforts, and I also want to thank the financial commission for their review and their insights, which helped guide what was recommended to the city council this evening. As the mayor indicated, there are three separate actions, you don't have to memorize what they are, because there's gonna be a slide at the end that has these exact actions. I want to start with the proposed use of unassigned general fund dollars. As was presented in the annual financial comprehensive report, or the, excuse me, the annual comprehensive financial report, or ACFR, at the council's last meeting, the city did see a general fund revenues over expenditures of $11.5 million, otherwise known as a surplus, for the last fiscal year. Those dollars went into the unassigned fund balance for the general fund, which gave us a balance of $27.8 million as of June 30, 2024. And so, the first part of the action that we are recommending is the transfer or assignment of some of these dollars, $6 million to our PERS reserve, $10 million to our facility maintenance fund, $1 million to our fleet fund, half a million to our liability fund, and then half a million to our technology fund. I will note that in the current year budget, we had proposed the assignment of, or the use of unassigned fund balance of $5 million to the PERS reserve, $2 million to the facility maintenance fund, and $1 million to the fleet. When following the, and that was what was presented or recommended, or presented to the financial commission back in February, following the completion of the audit and determination of the large amount of unassigned fund balance, we did increase the PERS reserve transfer, as well as the facility maintenance fund transfer. The one thing I will note is, all of these funds are still general fund dollars, so should the council determine that a different use was needed for them, we could transfer them up until the moment that they are spent. And so with that, I actually will pause to see if there are any council questions on this part of the mid-year budget. Of course, if there's a question, you want to come back to it later on, we can certainly do so.
I think we're good for now.
Okay.
So, moving on to our current fiscal year, I tried to boil down the really good news to just three slides, or three points. Our general fund revenues are trending up, above what we projected, or budgeted for. Our general fund expenditures are trending down, below what we budgeted for, all of which will lead to what we anticipate to be another additional surplus at the end of the fiscal year. I can't say exactly how much, because I don't know the future, unfortunately. And we are maintaining healthy reserves, both operating, as well as some of our other reserve funds that we have set aside. I tried to decide how many numbers were too many, and I settled on this is just right. This slide shows our general fund revenues. The first, it is broken down by departments, these correspond with what appear in the budget, as well as how we track or categorize the different revenue sources. The first column are year-to-date actuals, important to note that those are actuals as of January 31 of 2025, and the reason for that is because that was the most recent month that had been closed, we haven't closed February before we started putting this together. The next column is the overall budget, so the entire year's budget for projected revenues. The next column is the variance, so how much under budget we've, we are at, it's a little misleading, because we're only partially through the year, and so that's why we tried to show the last column that tells you about where we are at, we would expect to be at about 58% seven months through the year, and so you can see, overall, we are at 64% of budget, so we are trending up. A couple of things to note, the Parks and Recreation number is not concerning at all, because we haven't hit summer camps, spring classes, et cetera. The police amount is a small amount, so it's not gonna have a great impact on our overall budget, and we still have a couple of significant property tax payments that we will receive, which falls under the general category. I did want to break down just a little bit the general, this is where the bulk of our revenue comes from, as you can see, our property tax, we're at about 64%, again, we would expect to be at 58, and we still have at least two significant payments for property tax coming, so that will drive the bulk of our revenues for the year. The other one that I wanted to note is our transit occupancy tax, which you can see is at 76% of what we budgeted, I think that that tells us that tourism and travel is back. You know, we saw a significant dip during the pandemic, and I think we've budgeted accordingly, and now we see that people are traveling, people are staying in the hotels. Yes, sir. And then, sales tax is low, but that's to be expected, because January wouldn't have had the December revenues yet, so we should see that pick back up. The next slide is on expenditures by department, you can see what our actuals are, again, as of January 31, the next column is budgeted, and then the last column is the budget remaining, again, percentage is how much of the budget is remaining, rather than, it's the inverse of revenues, I realized if I had done, if I had thought about this months ago, I would have done it differently, so it wasn't as confusing, but it's, we would expect to have 42% of our budget remaining for each of the departments, as you can see, all of the departments are doing well, even the one that is low, there's a reason why, and we're gonna explain that in just a moment, and it's still good news. So, again, we're about 53% of the budget remaining, with five months left in the year. At this time, we do have some budget adjustments that we would like to make for the current year, those are listed here, for the general fund expenditures, a transfer of $1 million into our workers' compensation fund, this is something that we haven't funded as much as we should, or needed to over the years, and so, we had had a significant amount in the fund, and sort of gradually drew down on it, and now it's time to fund it back up again. The equipment replacement, this is a purchase that was previously approved in a prior year that should have been carried forward, it was not carried forward, and so we're putting it back in, it's not an increase in the project, it's not an increase in the purchase, it's just, it should have been carried forward and wasn't. The $50,000 for the legislative department, that is, the council gave us direction to research funding options for new police station and explore that, those dollars will be used for that. And then the last one is for development services, and I've highlighted the number yellow, because if you see right below it, under general fund revenues, is an exact equal amount, this is, these are pass-through dollars, so our plan checks, our permits are coming in higher than we expected, and so, we are increasing the expenditures for plan checks, but at the same time, that comes with an equal amount of revenue, because the dollars are simply a pass-through, so that's what those two are, and why they're highlighted. The next one, so the LEAP grant, so, a few years ago, we undertook our housing element update, we had originally planned on receiving a grant from HCD for that process, the grant did not come through until later, until the current year, and so we had already closed the project, used general fund dollars, and so we received a one-time payment that was not expected for this current fiscal year, we anticipated it would have been a previous year. And then, likewise, for the legal reimbursement, we have worked with our insurance pool, and the city had paid some expenses that they have reimbursed us for, and so those were unexpected revenues as well. And then the last category are the other funds, we are recommending the use of $50,000 for maintenance upgrade of fixing some of the issues that we've had with the council chambers. There, the next two, the Lacy improvements and the downtown lighting improvements, both of these projects, and both of these projects were previously approved in a prior year, again, should have been carried forward, some of the dollars were not. I will note, the downtown lighting improvements, that is not an increase in the project, it's simply just accounting for dollars that should have been rolled forward. The vast majority of the Lacy improvements, same thing, there is a slight increase of $25,000 to that project, due to the tariffs that have been imposed at the federal level, costs have gone up, and so, we are recommending a slight increase, but beyond that, those two projects remain the same dollar amount, as was previously approved by the city council. Okay, any questions on the fiscal year adjustments?
Vice? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, thanks, Mr. Maginot. So I'm gonna go back to the facility funds, where we're transferring, I think, $10 million from the unassigned funds, what's the total amount in that fund currently, with that transfer?
With that transfer, $10 million. There are, there are-
I thought we did, I know, I thought we had some from last year!
There is $1 million planned to transfer from current fiscal year funds, so at the end of the fiscal year, there will be $11 million in that fund.
So then my next question is, how did you arrive at $10 million? Like, why 10 million? Why not 15? Why not 5?
We, strategically, we wanted to leave a healthy amount of funds in the unassigned fund balance, simply just to be able to respond to any, anything that might come up, whether it's a disaster, or any sort of loss in revenue, and so, having about- And so having about $9 million in the unassigned was sort of the goal in that. And so transferring the $10 million put us to, down to about nine point, I think it's about 9.8, 9.7 million dollars in the unassigned.
Okay. But of course, this is general funds. So worst case scenario, if there's an emergency, we can actually pull from these anyway.
Exactly.
And then on the chamber improvements, that $50,000. Is that amount based on improvements we have identified? Is that an estimate based on the issues we have been having that you think we will need to fix the problems?
So that is based on, we've, we've talked with the, the good folks at KMVT who have identified fixes that are needed. And that is the dollar amount that they have identified to fix some of the bugs and issues that we've faced.
Thank you.
And just to add on, on the transfer to, to orient council and the public. So every time a new budget comes forward for adoption, we'll have a, a transfer amount that we're expecting. And that's in the budget. And then as we close, as John went over on the ACF, we'll actually ask council, based on all the most relevant data, recent data, what it is you want to transfer in there. So when council says, well, we, we thought we already put funds in there, you did approve that in the budget. We're increasing that amount now based on what actually happened. So that, that's why it feels like you're doing it twice. The, the revenues came in higher, expenditures lower. So we're putting more money into the fund where we're going to have the highest liabilities in the future.
And, and I apologize. You, you asked me a question. I had the answer literally right in front of me and I said, no, I got it. I don't need to look. There will actually, at the end of the fiscal year, there will be $13 million in the facility fund. There was $2 million at the end of last fiscal year. We're transferring an additional 1 million from the current year, so.
Because we have a reoccurring amount, a minimum.
Yeah.
Okay.
Generally, that's what we put in the budget.
That's what we had established.
Sorry. So council did, did not establish a minimum. They established the fund and then we, we want to continue looking at it. So when, when we look at this, we could say, oh, well, you know, we, we could use this for the police station. You could use it for any, any facility. But what's primarily driving this is we, we've never budgeted for the depreciation of buildings. So the community center, for example, a great asset that's already aging. We need to have funds in place when components of that reach end of life. So we're trying to get caught up quickly. So we did, as John said, 3 million total prior. I will do 10 million. You'll see it next year. And then at the end of next year's budget, you'll approve some amount of transfer based on what actually happened.
Councilmember Meadows.
Thank you, Mayor. So I think I know the answer to this, but I'm going to ask it as a question anyway, just so we can be, it's clear. So we're, we're not budgeting as we expect the ebbs and flows of revenues and expenditures to come in. We're actually just simply saying we're, you know, 60% of the way through the year. And so we're either ahead of or behind budget proportionally. So we're not attempting to budget as we expect the inflows and outflows. Is there a reason or do most jurisdictions do it as a proportion rather than expected revenues and expenditures?
I, I, you know, if the revenues were coming in much lower than we had, or budgeted or anticipated, we would be having a very different conversation, right? Then we would be budgeting based on, we'd be making adjustments based on what we anticipate. Because they're coming in higher, it's, we're, you know, making the adjustments that we know of, which are identified on the screen here. And the expenditures we're maintaining because, without sounding too boastful of the staff, we, we feel we did a good job of budgeting what we could accomplish for the year. And so there weren't, isn't, there isn't the, the need for as many adjustments in the current year based on projections. Again, if revenues were coming in much lower or things were a little tighter, we'd be having a different conversation.
So if I, if what I heard you say, if I correctly heard what you said, is that because we're doing it conservatively and it's working out in our favor, whether it's the revenues or the expenditures, we're not trying to do a more granular forecast. But, but we got halfway through the year before we know whether we're running, well, you guys look at it more often, but we only see it halfway through the year. So we could be at a point where the correction becomes more painful if we need it. But you and the finance commission would alert us to that?
Yes. I mean, without speaking, you know, too hypothetically, I, I would anticipate if, for example, the, the pandemic had happened in September of 20, of whatever year, we would have come back to the council prior to the traditional mid-year update to, to make some decisions and, and updates. If something were to happen that were to affect a significant revenue source or there was an expen, a significant expenditure, I would anticipate that we would come back prior to the mid-year, which is generally in January, February timeframe.
Councilmember Lang.
Thank you. First of all, thank you for this report. Thank you, Ms. Kim, for all the work they were into. This was a real pleasure to read. I like financial reports and this was a good one. Of course, the numbers were good, so that makes it a little bit easier to, to digest as well. But clearly a lot of work went into it. I thought it was quite clear and I wanted to say thank you. I asked this in writing, but I, I wanted to bring it up here as well, just to get a little bit more color on it. There's this effect on the revenues, SB 937, which postponed when we collect impact fees. Conceptually, like, I'm thinking, well, like, that means that the revenue line has this drop and then picks up. Maybe not all the way because some projects will get canceled or whatever. Could you kind of give me some parameters, give us all some parameters about what that notch is likely to look like?
Yeah. And, and I'll look to the city attorney and the, the assistant city manager, Zorn, to, to chime in if I miss anything. But the, the funds that Councilmember Lang is referring to are typically impact fees, which do not fall in the general fund. We actually made a, a switch in the methodology or how we budgeted for those funds. I want to say three or four years ago, where we had previously anticipated and projected the amount that we thought we were going to receive. To now, we were, were more of, okay, we've received the funds and so now they go into the budget and we spend them, right? And so you're, you're correct in that I, personally, I would anticipate that we will potentially see those funds come to us later than we would have previously. But again, we are, we've, we've, have already changed our mindset to we're not spending those dollars until we have them in hand. And so I, I personally, I don't think it's going to impact the way we, we budget too significantly other than when we get the dollars. Does that sound right?
Councilmember Weinberg.
So is there more to the presentation? I, I think my questions can, can wait if, if there's still more. Maybe they'll be answered.
There are, there is a little bit more. And that's, that's based on what some of the other actions that we're, we're asking the council to approve. As you saw, we, we are proposing transferring $6 million into the PERS Reserve Fund. This is a fund that was established a number of years ago, within the last 10 years, to help mitigate and offset future actions, increases from PERS, et cetera. About three, four years ago, we actually used the funds in the, the reserve and sent those to CalPERS to pay off some of our unfunded liabilities. That had the effect of when they lowered the discount rate, our increase wasn't as significant as it would have been if we hadn't have sent the dollars. So the financial commission has recommended that we aspirationally over the next five years, use dollars as they are available to pay down some of our unfunded liability. Without going into too much detail because it's a very complex subject. Currently, our, we are funded at 70.92%. And I say currently, and you'll see that it's not so current because that's as of June 30, 2023, which is the most recent data that PERS has provided to us. And so the goal would be to get to 80% funded over the next five years. The financial commission was very careful to say this would be, you know, it is aspirational as funds are available. The commission recognizes and staff recognizes there's a lot of competing priorities. And so the city, the council, the financial commission staff may determine that getting to 80% isn't as high of a priority as, say, a large capital purchase or multiple capital purchases. And so keeping it in mind as we are budgeting for the next number of years. And then following that, establishing a Section 115 trust, where we would fund that to earn dollars and monies which can then be used to offset further increases from CalPERS. I will say the, the, the most significant, from my perspective, and, and again, I'm not an expert on investments. I'm not an expert on PERS by any means, stretch of the imagination. The, to me, the biggest impact of sending the dollars from the PERS Reserve will be that when there are future increases in our costs, they won't be as high as they would have been if we don't send the dollars to PERS. That's, we, I, I was here, or I was the one who made the recommendation of the financial commission four years ago. And I said, this is going to be great because we're actually going to save money in the future. We sent the funds and then about a month or two later, PERS lowered the discount rate and shot everything I said out of the water. But again, our increase wasn't as significant as it would have been. So that's the recommendation from the financial commission. There was a question in the Q and A about some language in the resolution giving staff the, the authority to determine how best to divide those funds. Hopefully, the, the answer was sufficient. We have six different funds that make up our overall fund. And there is a, working with PERS, we can determine exactly how much of the $6 million will go to this fund and how much will go to this other fund because the other four funds are, we don't want to pay those off, quite frankly. It's our, our classic, our tier-one employees' funds that we want to, to put the money towards. Last time, we spent, sent 5 million and I think it turned out to be, I think 2.8 went to one of the funds and 2.2 went to the other fund. Because working with PERS, that's how we figured out we'd get the best value for the dollars. Okay? So again, the recommended actions, we'd like you to approve the, the mid-year budget adjustments. That includes the assignment of unassigned general fund dollars as well as the budget adjustments. Approve the financial commission's recommended use of the PERS Reserve. And then, as was stated, approve the updated salary schedule.
Okay. Councilmember Weinberg, and then we'll hopefully go to public comment.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation and thank you for the responses on the Q and A. I apologize ahead of time. Every time there's something financial on the agenda, I machine gun you with questions. It's because I know how important this is and I feel, but I feel like it is the, personally speaking, I think it's my weakest area when it comes to city governance. It's why I ask all those questions. I am, I'm, I'm the, the council member who asked the question about those two operative clauses in the second resolution. It's clauses two and three. Both of those clauses essentially say, city staff shall determine which plan dollars. And then it goes on and there's your timing. In your presentation, you mentioned that these are numbers that are in the millions. And it, it's, it's not that I don't trust you to make the best decisions on behalf of the city, because I do. But I, I feel nervous about delegating that authority away from the council because, you know, if, if we're talking about $150, fine. But if we're talking about millions, I, it, it feels to me that that's something that the council ought to consider, ought to be made known to the public. And even if we, we end up agreeing with your, your recommendation, and I have every reason to believe that we probably would, when you're talking about that much money, I want to be able to ask questions. I want to know more about it. So if, if my colleagues agreed with me, could we not pass this resolution? Have you do, make your determinations and recommendations and then bring it back in another, as, as, as a resolution at another date? Is that, is that doable?
Yeah. It's entirely up to the discretion of the council.
Okay. I'll save everything else ahead for discussion. Thank you.
Public comment.
I have no speaker cards.
All right. I'll bring it back to council for deliberation. We could, we could, yes, Councilmember Weinberg, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you again for, for this report. And I will echo Councilmember Lang in his accolades for having a very clear, easy-to-read report. Again, the, the numbers help, but clearly staff has done a tremendous job. And I, I remember what these sorts of meetings were like four years ago. Obviously, those are very different circumstances. But kudos to you for, not, not the results, because the results are as much a symptom of the economy as they are anything else. But clearly, you've done an exemplary job and I just want to say thank you for that. I'll reiterate my comments from questions just a moment ago. I can't vote for the second resolution because of the, the fogginess regarding what potentially will be millions of dollars. I would rather have that come back to us later. The number, the numbers all that we saw earlier kind of made sense to me. I'm one of those people who pays property taxes at the last minute because I'm greedy and want to keep all the interest that I can. So I pay after April 1st. In, in terms of, of revenue that we're going to be generating, I just want to make a couple of comments about what we're getting in terms of revenue from the police department. As far as I'm concerned, if we got $0 in revenue from the police department, I'm, I'm fine with that. I mean, I, Chief, I'm not telling you how to enforce the law. It's, you know, issuing tickets, citations, it's a tool you have. Use your tools in, in your best judgment. If we got $0 though from, from PD, I'm okay with that. However, things are going to start changing in the city once we have third-party parking enforcement because that contract is going to cost us money. I'm afraid that there's going to be more pressure felt to start generating revenue in order to offset the cost of, of that third-party enforcement. I view the, the role of the third-party enforcement as compliance, not as revenue generation. And I, I, you know, I'm, I'm just one of five up here, but I hope staff will take that into consideration. And I hope my colleagues will sort of think about what they see from it too. I know that, that later on this year, probably, we're going to talk about perhaps issuing, not issuing, but having a permit parking system. And that, that could cost additional monies in terms of third-party enforcement. And there'd be more fines coming in. So I just, I, I, as, as staff goes through the budgeting process and reflects back on the lessons learned from the, the mid-year budget reallocations that we're doing right now, I hope you'll keep that in mind. Other than that, thank you very much. And again, I'm sorry that I'm such a pain in the tuchus when it, when it comes to financial matters.
Councilmember Meadows.
Yeah. So I'm trying to follow what Councilmember Weinberg said. And I think you were talking about two different things. So one thing you said you wanted more, I'll use the word granularity again, around the $6 million or so in various PERS funds. And so you'd like to see that. Or, because I just want to be sure, because this is going to affect our motions.
If, if, if you, if you look at the resolution, the second resolution, operative clause two says, we, we are resolving that city staff shall determine which plan dollars are applied. And operative clause three is similar. So I, I don't like. So I don't like the idea of council resolving that city staff will make a determination that potentially has millions of dollars of effect on our budget.
Okay, so that's, I understood that one correctly, then. But the second point that I think I heard you make is that, and I agree with you, that we, that the Police Department, we don't necessarily want to be producing revenue through, say, ticketing, enforcement, whatever, that type of thing. And I, I don't disagree with that. But where I don't think you've reached, and I could be incorrect in this, is a revenue is not always a revenue. Sometimes it's unfilled positions, and, you know, so, or maybe it's our expenditures or expenditures are less. So I don't know if we're really seeing, we'd have to delve into whether those are truly revenues and coming from code enforcement, and I'm not sure that we had enough information. So I'm not willing to say before we even get the code enforcement on board and working on that to try to address something now that we don't necessarily know to be, we don't necessarily know it's a revenue through code enforcement.
I think that's an excellent point, and I agree with you, and I'm sorry that I was not clear in my comments. I was not suggesting we take action right now, but I think I am foreseeing in the future that a time may come where we or a future council may look at parking enforcement as revenue generation, either to cover the cost of third-party, or maybe revenue generation for other purposes. I mean, there are certainly jurisdictions that look at Police Department in that way. I hope we don't get there, I hope this council doesn't want to do it. You never know what the future is going to bring.
Because we've talked about it as behavior modification, which we, I think, probably all completely support. So that's why I just wanted clarification on what Councilmember Weinberg said, because I wasn't sure that I heard it all. So thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. And also, addressing Councilmember Weinberg's points regarding the second resolution. So I understand your concern related to item number two, but not so much with number three, where it's just really deferring to staff to determine the appropriate timing for the payment, which I would want them to do, and then they would come back to us. So I support, and, you know, I won't repeat what you've already said, I definitely support the concerns you have echoed, and I'm aligned with you there, you know, especially if this is in the millions of dollars, that that should really come back to council for further direction and discussion. But I don't think your reasoning applies to number three unless I missed something. And then, with regards to number two, I do want to ask either Mr. Maginot or Mr. England, is there a specific reason why staff wanted this delegation? Is there a need for flexibility and to be nimble to move quickly on this, or this ask of bringing it back to us would delay the process?
Yeah, Vice Mayor, we're fine bringing it back. CalPERS is a very complex and dense topic, so the more public gets daylight shed on that, we're happy to see it. What happens is you work with your CalPERS rep, and they will bring the biggest spreadsheet you have ever seen in the world, and they show you how you apply the different bases to reduce your liability to the maximum output, and then they will distill that down to a number. We're more than happy to bring that back to council so people can understand the liabilities and everything that goes into that.
Great, thank you. And so, Councilmember Weinberg, if you could just further explain why your concerns related to number two, which I understand also relate to number three?
No, thank you for pointing that. I think you're right when it comes to number three. I'm okay with, I'm okay with delegating the staff, the timing of it. I guess, in reading number two, it just scared me a little bit. I let that fear govern number three as well.
Councilmember Lang.
I share some of your concerns about this, this one. I'm glad that the first ordinance calls out that six million dollars would be aimed at PERS. You say, I strongly believe that living up to those obligations is a key priority, both for now and making sure that we don't handicap future councils with neglected pension obligations. I actually had a bigger problem with number three than number two. And the reason for that is, my read was number two is a fairly mechanical thing. They look at these different funds and give us advice about how to, but in the end, I'm kind of indifferent about which obligations of six million dollars, I'm ready to defer that. I'm actually more concerned about number three. And the reason I say that is I have a concern that this coming year may well be a very tumultuous one in financial markets. And in the end, it's almost, I don't feel the staff deserves the heat if they mistakenly mistime it in some way, right? Ultimately, I think that the timing of that should come back to the electeds to make that call. Hopefully, I'm wrong. But there's good reason to think that the financial world will not be a benign calm sea for the coming year. And I do think it's appropriate that when we're talking about timing, bringing that back to us and to the public is appropriate.
So, sorry, can I, so on the timing, so Councilmember Lang, the good news is, is good year, bad year, CalPERS won't let us know how they did until 2027. They lag on two years. The, the timing issue, why it's important, you can make payments to CalPERS two ways. You can do your annual payment as a prepayment, and then you get the benefit of the additional discount rate, whatever it is right now, John probably knows it, six point two five percent over the year. Or you can pay monthly, and then you do not get that counted forward. So when you're making a prepayment in particular, you want to make that prior to the plan, period, year starting. So CalPERS uses a sixty-year time horizon, which is one of many unrealistic things that they do. And then they're reporting lags, as you've seen, by two years. And if you have a good year, they will lower the discount rate, which increases your liability. If you have a bad year, your liability goes up because you didn't reach the returns that they calculated for you. So when you're making a prepayment to your liability, the timing of the payment is important based on CalPERS rules, which are not tied to the reality of investing timeframes. Lots of things with CalPERS are not tied to reality, but this one's particularly important. When we do it, will potentially earn us a reduction in liability of several thousand dollars.
Okay, so the judgment there is not some sort of market timing judgment? It's judgment in terms of hitting your payments to get the best bang for the buck with CalPERS?
Correct. If you miss their timeline, then they're not going to apply it for a year later.
All right, that's helpful. Thank you.
So I understand the concerns of my colleagues. I don't necessarily feel the same way. I actually do have a financial background and a master's degree in business administration and worked in the banking sector for several years, and I still don't feel like I'm the one that should be making those calls. So my preference would be to go ahead and defer to staff, because we're not really talking about sort of traditional financial management practices. We're talking about municipal practices and public pension liabilities and things that have sort of esoteric nuances that are beyond me. But if my colleagues all wanted to take up the decision for when to time these things, I, you know, that's okay, it's a five-person body, but that's where I am on this. Do we have any other remarks or comments for deliberation?
I'll just say that I'm coming around to that point of view as well. Now that I'm learning that number two and number three are mostly mechanics of CalPERS, rather than, like, when I first read it, I thought number two was like, they're going to choose like S and P five hundred versus NASDAQ. I read number three, they're going to try to time the market. That would have been uncomfortable. Now that I understand that it has much more to do with simply working with the fine executives at CalPERS to fine-tune the thing, I'm more than happy to defer that.
Well, let's start with one that I think that we have consensus on. How about I entertain a motion on recommendation one?
Okay, Mayor, I move that we adopt resolution approving fiscal year 2024-25 major financial update and budget adjustments.
Friendly amendment?
Strike the second whereas, which refers to the Financial Commission approving it?
Let me move to the resolution page. Oops.
There, and in the Q and A, I think there was a revision that took it out, but your motion wasn't clear which one you were moving.
I was reading from the staff report motion, which would be the resolution in the package.
So the second whereas refers to the Financial Commission having reviewed it, but the report says that the Financial Commission had something different.
Okay, I get it. So without the second whereas, I will accept that friendly amendment, yes.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right. City Clerk?
Councilmember Lang?
Yes.
Councilmember Meadows?
Yes.
Councilmember Weinberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Flagler?
Yes.
Mayor Daley?
Yes.
Motion carries. As amended.
All right, so that's it for number ten. We are now on to number eleven. This is an information.
No, no, we have two more resolutions.
Oh, two more. Gone, gone. Okay.
I can go.
The hard part on number ten is still in front of us. Okay.
So I can go ahead and move. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Los Altos approving the transfer of funds to CalPERS to pay down the city's unfunded accrued liability, and I'm moving that as the resolution in front of us.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right. City Clerk?
Councilmember Lang?
Yes.
Councilmember Meadows?
Yes.
Councilmember Weinberg?
No.
Vice Mayor Flagler?
Yes.
Mayor Daley?
Yes.
Motion carries four to one, with Councilmember Weinberg opposed.
All right, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Can I just ask staff, because I had similar reservations to Councilmember Weinberg, even though I supported the motion, and I'm curious if the city manager could do an off-agenda memo to us whenever these dollars are assigned.
We would be happy to.
Thank you.
All right, so now we are on resolution three.
I'm happy to, since I'm on a very slow roll here. I approve that we adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Los Altos approving an updated fiscal year 2024-25 pay schedule to comply with the California Public Employees' Retirement System statutory and regulatory requirements for compensation, earnable, and publicly available pay schedules with the corrections as amended in the Q and A.
Second.
City Clerk?
Councilmember Lang?
Yes.
Councilmember Meadows?
Yes.
Councilmember Weinberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Flagler?
Yes.
Mayor Daley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, and now we're going to spend the next hour and forty-nine minutes delaying so I can hit my pool number on the adjournment time. No, I'm kidding about that. We are on number eleven. This is an information item. We won't have a staff reporter be taking action. Are there reports from other council members on things that we need to hear about, or are there new agenda items that people would like to consider? Councilmember Lang.
Well, since I am lucky enough to go first, I'll say that I just wanted to say how wonderful the IFTAR turned out. I thought it was a great event. I was glad to be able to attend. I know some could, some couldn't, but I thought it was really well-handled. Sometimes some of that can be a little delicate. I thought everyone involved did a wonderful job, and man, the food rocked. It was excellent. Just two other things I wanted to mention. One is our friends of the Los Altos Community Coalition hosted a very good presentation from Michael Warr from Stanford. That was a good juxtaposition to the fire department, we heard earlier before, and certainly recommend that. That's certainly something that we, as a city, could do whatever we can to share that information. And I thought that was really good. I'll also just mention that I had regular office hours, won't get into that, but I had my office hours at the high school. I wish all our residents were as well-prepared and rational to speak to. They were, it was a pleasure, it really was. The one thing I'd say is that most of the people we've met through the process are seniors, and so they're going to be gone soon. And one of the things I talked about with them as a challenge from their leadership point of view is if they can help us keep the ball rolling with that, because I think they're interested in making sure that we hear from them as a members of the community was very good. And a thank you to Assistant Principal Derek Mihara and Principal Tracy Rehner, I think I say that right, who both came to the meeting and spent time with me. And Derek, in particular, walked me out and said how interested he is personally in making sure that any perceived gap between our organizations is healed and is made more collaborative. So it was good, and thanks for the pizza. That was great, too.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Thank you very much. I also attended the IFTAR. I agree with everything that Councilmember Lang said. I just want to call out the Vice Mayor's presentation at the IFTAR. I think it was fantastic. Thank you for your words. And I will echo that the LACC event last week was, it's something that I think everyone should watch. If you are interested in the study session that we had earlier today, you really ought to watch that LACC meeting. I mean, it's very timely considering what the council is considering and everything that's going on. I would like to propose a future agenda item. I was wondering if we could have, if my colleagues would support me in agendizing either discussion item or a study session to talk about CalPERS. What exactly is our UAL? Why do the Finance Commission think eighty percent is the magic number? What is a Section one one five plan? I mean, the responses on the Q and A for short-term, medium-term, and long-term, I thought were good, but I think that it would be really useful, not just to me, but probably to all of us and to the community, to hear a little bit more about the details of CalPERS liabilities. I know that there are some cities that got in trouble trying to bond their way out of their liabilities, and I think we're actually in decent shape, so we wouldn't consider something that radical, but I think it would be, I think it would be useful for the council and for the community.
It seems more like a study session than a discussion item, but I'm definitely supportive of wanting to hear more.
Could be an A-bag session or something like that. It might not even be something that we need to do here. It could be something that is, you know, I mean, why doesn't, why doesn't CalPERS have a session for us? Huh? Because opacity is a feature, not a bug?
I mean, yeah. I think it's a presentation that should be focused on Los Altos, not just something generic that covers the whole region. I personally am very interested in our own unfunded liabilities, why the Finance Commission has made its recommendations, and I suspect that members of the public would be, too.
May I add, maybe it really should be, if it's a study session, maybe it should be a joint study session with the Finance Commission, because do they really know?
Why don't you just give it to the Finance Commission to host the meeting?
CalPERS? Right, so.
Why doesn't, why doesn't it just a Finance Commission?
Oh, now I got my assistant city manager going.
Not to jump in, but the Financial Commission did receive that presentation back in September and October. So it's, we've presented that exactly, I think, what Councilmember Weinberg is requesting at the Financial Commission. And since they haven't given us updated numbers, the numbers haven't changed.
Well, why don't you send us the link, then?
I support having a study session on this, especially if you've already done the work to prepare the information for the Finance Commission. It's probably not a, it doesn't sound like it's a lot of staff work to prepare a study session. Okay, good. Anybody else? Vice Mayor?
Thank you. So yes, I also attended the IFTAR dinner. Thank you, Councilmember Weinberg, for your feedback. And I just want to recognize that the city was well-represented. The city manager was there, Chief Lagagrin was there, and many others. And so it was a very great event, as Councilmember Lang said, but it was even better knowing that the city was well-represented. I also was able to attend the Little League opening day. And I'm proud to say I threw a strike. Councilmember Weinberg was there to see it.
Best first pitch that I have seen in the last three or four years that I've been in the class?
Thank you. Thank you. So just wanted to thank the mayor for not being around that weekend. It worked out really well for me, so thank you. The only other thing I want to share with council members, and it's very topical because we're talking about emergency preparedness and the lack event. So the Citizens Association Board members have a wager going where they're going to have all fifteen cities compete to see have a wager going where they're going to have all 15 cities compete to see which city will have the most council members be CERT trained by the end of this year. So far, Monteserino has three of their five. So really, we have to like aim to have at least four of us. And it's going to get competitive. Um for obvious reasons, everybody wants to do it. Um but it should be fun wager where all cities are competing to see which council has the most CERT-trained council members by the end of the year. So let's go. Let's do it. By the way, do we have any already? I am not.
Can we have council members or their significant others, like my husband?
A proxy?
Yes, he got CERT trained, CERT certified. Just, yeah, yeah, right?
Right.
Because there's no way I can do CPR on anybody without needing it myself. So I disqualify myself from CERT training right now.
It's up to the four of us because right now, Monteserino is leading. So it'll be it's a fun um challenge, and it's also good for the community for us to lead, to get trained. Thank you.
Yeah, I would just point out, by the way, that our CERT teams probably penetrate, what, 25% of our neighborhoods or 50% of our, no, CERT block action teams penetrate 25% of our neighborhoods. The S- the CERT is probably, mm, anyway, the point is, all the attention we can bring to it brings more people into the program, right? And that's what we want. So I am I'm in. Personally, I will do the training, okay? Uh I, there were two events this weekend that I could not make because I have a longstanding charity commitment uh out of town. And so I was at that event and had been looking forward to the IFTAR. Thankfully, uh so many colleagues um were there. We did a proclamation. Uh Vice Mayor read it, I assume. Um and I really, really missed throwing out the first pitch. Like, I thought about that when I pulled my papers to run for this office. I thought about throwing out the first pitch. I have coached in both Little League and Pony Baseball and Mountain View Los Altos Girls Little League since I came to this community in 2010. So I'm jealous. Anyway, uh if that's all we have for tonight, meeting adjourned at 9:20.